Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, March 10, 2020, and calling this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Ms. Williams.
Present. And Mr. Majors is running a little bit late this evening, Mr. Petrowski, so please mark him as present. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. In light of what's happening kind of at the world stage, national stage, and the impact of, or perceived impact of the coronavirus, I'd actually just like us to keep all of our leaders, federal, state, and local level, as well as anyone who's come into contact, and people who are already ill due to the disease, if we could just keep them all in our thoughts and prayers, and just pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. And then in addition, I'm sorry, one other thing I thought about as well. There has been a rash of violence across the city and the region. The reasons are attributed to a number of different factors, but if we could just also pause for a moment and think about the victims of gun violence both locally and in the region as well. Thank you. Thank you. No, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Ms. Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to communications. I was looking for fire chief. They're not coming this evening. Never. Couldn't make it. Couldn't make it?
So.
Okay, okay, thank you. We were going to have a presentation, our overview of a meeting that our fire chief and our health officer had with Congressman Perry this morning, but they're not available. Moving on to communications, I'll start to my right. Anyone who'd like to come to the mic, please do so now. I'm sorry, courtesy of the floor. Well, hello. Anyone to my right who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. Okay? Anyone in the middle who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. Pardon me. This is public comment, yes. Courtesy of the floor.
I'm going to provide, interpret.
Okay.
My name is Adonias Hernandez, para todos ustedes.
My name is Adonias Hernandez.
I live here in Harrisburg.
I live here in Harrisburg.
At this moment, I'm a business owner.
I have seen that how our business has been impacted because my clients are not able to come to my business.
A lot of times when they go walking to my business, they are beaten and are taking their money.
And that obviously affects the economy of our state of Pennsylvania.
So it is easy for, it makes sense that our clients are able to come to our businesses, and also for us as business owners to go and be able to buy goods.
I mean, it affects that, but I realized that there are many people who are suffering from the same problem, and now that we're in the community of Milpa, who has this dream of helping Latin communities have a license to fulfill their dreams, I think it's going to be a tremendous help for us.
And here today, we are gathered as Milpa as a community, you know, letting you know that this is something that will benefit us all, us as a community and us as a state.
I think the moment is now, because if we don't do it today, when? If we don't do it ourselves, who will do it? I think we can achieve this dream together.
So the moment is now, the moment we cannot wait. If it's not us, then who? If it's not now, then when?
So thank you. Let's get together and fight for this dream. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Anyone in the middle at this time? Oh, I'm sorry. Did he want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Están ustedes. Estamos aquí con el propósito de que ustedes nos apoyen con la propuesta 162020.
City council members, good evening. We are here with the purpose to seek your support for Resolution 162020.
Me llamo Gerardo. Trabajo en una, en una factoría. Perdón. Me llamo Gerardo. Mi nombre es Gerardo, y vivo en Harrisburg. Vivo hace 19 años aquí en Harrisburg. Soy miembro de mi más, de Milpa. Aquí en Harrisburg trabajo en una factoría de carnes, en el corto, carnes, proceso de la carne, y otras cosas. Todos, todo esto, todo ese tipo de trabajo, por lo últimos dos años y medio.
My name is Gerardo. My community, I am, I am here from Harrisburg. This is his community. I have lived here for 19 years. I am a member of Milpa here in Harrisburg. I work in a meat factory where I cut and process meat, as well as a bit of everything else. I have been in this type of work for the past two and a half years.
Nuestras familias son afectadas de no tener licencias porque no se anda con seguridad. Afectan el trabajo. No se puede ir a donde uno desea ir a trabajar. Afecta a la familia monetariamente, físicamente, y espiritualmente. Nuestras familias se preocupan cada vez que, que se tiene, que tiene uno que manejar sin licencia. Una licencia daría a nuestras familias una vida digna para estar bien.
Our families are affected by not having a license because there's a lack of safety. It affects your work. You can't work where you desire. It affects the family mentally, physically, and spiritually. Our families worry every time they have to drive without a license. A license would give our families a decent life and well-being.
Tener una licencia daría paz, tranquilidad a nuestra familia. Queremos tener acceso a este documento, que es muy valioso para la familia y la comunidad. Queremos una licencia para poder conducir a nuestro, a nuestro trabajo, para estar más tranquilos, para poder salir y hacer compras y otras básicas necesidades.
Having a license would give our families peace and tranquility. We want to have access to this document that is very valuable for our families and community. We want a license to be able to drive to our jobs, to be more calm, and to get our basic needs.
Quiero pedir a ustedes como concejales de ciudad que nos ayu, que nos apoyen el tener una licencia. La licencia debe ser parte de la vida cotidiana de cada residente en nuestra ciudad y estado.
I want to ask you as the city council members to support us in this, in this resolution for license regardless of immigration status. A license is a necessity for a daily life for each resident in our city and state.
La vida pasa muy pro, muy rápida. Por eso no podemos esperar quedarnos estancados. Estamos aquí para pedirles su voto a favor de la resolución que se dice en nuestra ciudad. Está con nosotros. Gracias, concejales, por entender la necesidad de cada familia de nuestra ciudad.
Life goes on by so fast. That's why we can't wait or get stuck. We are here to ask you for your vote in favor of the resolution that says our city is with us. Thank you, city council members, for understanding the needs of each family in our community.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Grove, owner of Elementary Coffee Company, speaking on behalf of many small business owners here in Harrisburg and beyond. I am in support of the movement to allow undocumented families the right to obtain driver's license, for those licenses to not, to be unmarked, as to not flag their immigration status. There has been no action at a federal level for millions of families fighting for immigration reform. Many immigration, many immigrant families in our communities are left in unstable situations because of this. These families cannot access a driver's license here in Pennsylvania because of their immigration status. The lack of a driver's license only creates fear in families and potentially perpetuates the necessity of driving to go, of driving to go work, school, or doctor's visits without a driver's license. A lack of a driver's license hurts the ability for immigrants to continue to contribute to our local city, businesses, and our state's economy. Immigrants are a part of the growth and small business community, both as small business owners and as employers in so many vital sectors of the city. I stand with immigrant families and workers to ensure that they have a safe means of transportation and identification. Eliminating the barrier to identification and secure transportation, in my mind, is the most basic step for creating equality and providing the opportunities that so many folks seek within our city and state. I support Resolution 162020, a driver's license for all Pennsylvania residents regardless of immigration status. There is a simple solution to this problem, which is allow, to allow driver's license regardless of immigration status. It is a form of identification, and it does not flag folks as anything less than honorable within our city. For this reason, I ask you to vote on the resolution that would open our city and state to provide opportunities to all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katrina Racer. I am a Harrisburg resident, a member of Put People First PA, and a part of the Pennsylvania Poor People's Campaign, and I'm here in support of Milpa, and I urge you to pass this resolution. Recently, my daughter had the flu, and in the middle of the night, her temperature spiked to 104 degrees. I am fortunate enough to have a car and a driver's license. For me, how to get her to the hospital, or what might happen along the way, was the least of my concerns. But that isn't the case for the whole of the people in my community. Some folks have the additional burden of worrying about how they will get their children to the medical care that they need, how to afford that care, and what will happen if they drive without a license and get pulled over. The outcome for a parent taking her child to the hospital while driving without a driver's license could mean arrest, incarceration, and deportation. I see no difference between an undocumented immigrant and myself. We are both human beings, doing our best to provide for our families. We both deserve equal rights of protection under the law. No one should have to worry about these things in the event of a medical emergency. People deserve the dignity to be able to take care of themselves and their families without worrying about losing everything. Healthcare is a public issue. People, no matter what their documentation status, will become sick and need medical care in order to lessen the impact on the whole of the community. Healthcare is a human right, and the ability to access that healthcare benefits us all. Access, in this case, looks like a driver's license. The issue of unmarked driver's licenses isn't just an immigrant issue, it's a family issue, it's a safety issue, and it's a healthcare issue. It affects all of us. So it's time for us to break the isolation in Harrisburg, so please, I urge you to do what's best for the entire Harrisburg community and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ori, and I go to high school in Harrisburg. I immigrated to the United States in 2010 when I was eight years old, and I've been here for 12 years, but I've been in Harrisburg for 10 years. And as an immigrant, I've had the privilege of, or the unfortunate, of seeing how other immigrants have had to navigate through life. I immigrated here when I was eight years old, so this, having a driver's license was not, it's not something that I was thinking about. But my mother, she immigrated here in 2007 before me, and she lived in New York City before she lived in Harrisburg, and she didn't have a driver's license, but she still had to go to work, and she would have to walk miles from home to work, even in the snow. And if anybody has lived in New York City, the snow is very harsh, and she's had to have, to walk several miles to go to work in order to get money to make documents for my sister and I to immigrate here. So one of the advantages that my mother and I have is that we're able to, I was able to get my driver's license as soon as I wanted to, and, but I've seen many families who have, who weren't able to do so, because I've seen many people immigrate from Africa and several other places to come here, and when you have a driver's license, you don't know the struggles that other people's, that other people go through. Even if we tell you, you, you don't understand it unless you've gone through it. And it's sad when a mother or a father can't take their child to school, or they can't take their child to a hospital because they don't have a driver's license, or because, you know, they just don't have access to it, because they don't know these things. Because they're immigrants, they learn as they go, and it's a struggle that no one truly understands unless them, theirself are in that position. So that's why I'm really passionate about this movement, because I've had to see what other people have gone through, and I've seen what my mother has gone through, and it's not something that anybody in this world should go through, regardless of their documents status, or whatever it is. They're human beings, and as as human beings, we should treat other people, you know, as one of our own. They're no different than us. So that's, I guess, that's why I really want you guys to pass this, the resolution of 1620, because it's really important for the community and everybody else. It shows you support immigrants, and it shows that you support just human beings. So just trying to make it in this world. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina, and I am currently a senior in high school, as well as a member of Milpa's youth committee. I decided to join Milpa and their cause after witnessing how the lack of a driver's license affects us, the residents of Harrisburg. I realized that this issue is not only problematic for the undocumented people themselves, but our community, our entire community suffers from it. Their status and struggle with transportation holds them back from being present in our community, mentally and physically. There is a great fear that they have to overcome, along with the lack of transportation. I am here to speak for a mixed-status family, specifically about their formerly undocumented member. There is, of course, a lot of pressure that comes with being the only one of your siblings that isn't a legal resident. It reduced his self-worth, and he felt like he had to prove that he deserved to be here. This man was able to over, to become a supervisor at his job and learn how to speak English despite not having a driver's license or a proper education. However, he still could do other things, like, he still could not do other things, like pick up his children from school or visit his parents. Then, when ICE deportations were becoming common in Harrisburg, he sometimes had to miss out on work. He was not the only one stressed out about his circumstances. His children, wife, and mother in particular, were afraid that some ti, someday he wouldn't be with them. He had to choose between providing for his kids or possibly being separated from them. This man was one of the fortunate people who was able to become a legalized resident thanks to his oldest, oldest son. One of the first things he did was get his driver's license, and then he started his own business. Having a driver's license allows him to travel to different places in Pennsylvania for work, and go to his son's sports events, do the groceries, buy clothes, simple things that we all take for granted. People should not have to struggle to obtain these basic necessities like food or feel stress every time they step outside, causing their families to worry. Thank you for listening to his story, and everyone who feels the same way he did.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? In the middle?
Les Ford, 2033 Bellevue Road in Harrisburg. I have lived in Harrisburg for 25 years. I have been in this room to address many issues over those years. I can think of nothing any more important than public safety. Whatever else goes on in the city, whether it is immigration issues or issues that developers bring to us, issues that seniors bring to us, they are affected by the level of violence in a municipality. A few weeks ago, Brian Humphrey came here and talked about the level of gun violence in his neighborhood. I listened to what he had to say here. I went out to the lobby with members of city council. I listened to what they had to say out there, and I went home and probably didn't think too much more about it. However, in the last couple of weeks, I've had occasion to think about that conversation again, and that has been sparked by the repeated gun play in this city in the last weeks. And that's a misnomer, gun play. It's not gun play. This, this is a potentially fatal situation. You've all seen the documented cases. The one that did it for me was the shooting at 19th and Dairy at nine o'clock in the morning. Children are at 19th and Dairy at nine o'clock in the morning. It's one of the most difficult intersections in the city of Harrisburg, and we've talked about that for years. But to have a shooting at 19th and Dairy and for the community to not be outraged is beyond my comprehension. So in addition to that, we have had what I consider to be gunfire that involves high-capacity, rapid-fire weapons in this city. We have had that gunfire now for almost three weeks solid, and I have yet to see or hear what I consider to be an appropriate response from this community. And this time, I'm not talking about the administration, I'm not talking about city council, I'm not necessarily talking about the media, but I am talking about the community. So as other issues come before us, we have to say, we have control over this, we're impacted by this, or we have no control over this, but we're impacted by this. In this instance of gun violence, we are, we are impacted by this, and to a measure, we have control over this if we choose to respond. So I am challenging the city to choose to respond before things get any worse as we get into the summer months. So far, there haven't been that many fatalities, but there certainly hasn't been a lack of people out there with high-capacity, rapid-fire weapons, shooting up our city. So I'm asking the, the city as a whole, the community as a whole, to please respond to that, the media, the administration, city council, and most importantly, the citizens themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the middle, please? Anyone to my left? Thank you. We'll move on to approval of minutes. Before I do that, I acknowledge Mr. Majors' attendance, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to approval of minutes, council members, approved the legislative session minutes of February 25, 2020. Is there any admission, deletions, or corrections? Here and then. Minister Stan is approved. Moving on to reports of committee. Report from Chair Allen on the work session of March 3, 2020. Mr. Allen, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Up for discussion at the work session of March 3 of 2020 was Resolution 13 of 2020, which was a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Mayor Dussel for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the city of Harrisburg. This is important. We have worked with Mayor Dussel for prior audits. We selected a new firm to do our 20, because of our 2020 audit, and we are retaining Mayor Dussel to help with some of the pre-audit planning and some of the transition services that we will do as part of this process. So I encourage my colleagues to support this resolution as we put it up for a vote tonight. Thus concludes my committee business.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Moving on to report from Chair Mattson on the work session of March 3, 2020. Mr. Mattson, you ready with your report?
Yes, thank you, President Williams. On March 3, the Community and Economic Development Committee discussed Resolution 16. Resolution 16 supports state legislation to allow every resident of Pennsylvania access to a valid driver's license regardless of immigration status. Council received a presentation from Milpa, Movement of Immigrant Leaders in Pennsylvania, in regards to the benefits of supporting the resolution. As Chair of Community and Economic Development, I would like to note that transportation remains one of the largest barriers to employment, and as a region, we are facing a deficit of workers. For every two jobs, there is one person. This means as a region, we will need to reach out to all populations willing to work and contribute to the economy. Soon, if we don't address the, this workers deficit, employers may be forced to automate or outsource, leading to mass layoffs. So as a result, I encourage my colleagues to vote in affirmation of the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Moving on to report from Chair Majors on the work session of March 3, 2020. Mr. Majors, are you ready with your report?
Yes, President Williams. On March 3, 2020, Public Works Committee met to consider Resolution 14 of 2020, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter a professional services agreement with Ecological Services Incorporated for the purpose of lake management services at Italian Lake. We received a report from Dave Baker, who's in charge of parks maintenance. This is a contract with a firm that has knowledge and has been working on Italian Lake for a number of years. This is to continue to have that work done so that they can maintain Italian Lake moving forward in the future, and I had asked my colleagues to support Resolution 2020, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to ordinance for first reading. We had none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, none. Ordinance for final passage, none. Moving on to override of mirror veto, Bill 1 of 2020. Mr. Petrowski, please read that.
Bill 1 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Green. It's an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg. Various unnamed paper streets within the block bounded by Harris Street, North 7th Street, Boyd Street, and Wallace Street. Boyd Street between Wallace Street and North 7th Street, and Cowden Street between Boyd and Riley Street pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments, council members?
Just a question for clarification. For a vote of affirmation to overturn the veto, that is a vote of yes to overturn the veto, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the motion. May we have a conversation about it?
Wait a minute. Before you, before you do that, any other questions or comments, council members?
Yeah, and I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we were looking to do this vacation because we had, we had two. This is for where the State Archives building is going to be located. No. This is the federal courthouse. I apologize. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions or comments, council members?
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I would ask is for a, you know, if the administration would like to give a, a public explanation as to why they chose to veto this bill.
Does council have the option to respond to the administration's comments?
If you would like, but after they've done their, their comment. I have a comment before you make a comment, Mayor Reed, I mean Mayor. I mean, Mayor.
Mayor Reed.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Well, that's two times. I can say it again, make it three. Mayor Reed, now it's three. It's done, okay? But I have a comment, I'm sorry. I'm a little concerned, Mayor, because you did a veto to, for the street vacate in that area for the federal courthouse. In doing so, you said, "I submit the street vacation policy for the city of Seattle for your consideration. I would define public benefit for Harrisburg to include a commitment to utilizing local labor and, where applicable, affordable housing components." And then you go on to say, "Please consider adopting a formal review policy." Well, I'm a little outraged by that veto, because the whole period that we were advocating for utilizing local labor at the federal courthouse, I didn't see you anywhere advocating. And then the turnaround is that for the last two, three years, we had individuals, developers, coming in here addressing affordable housing components. And during the time that the individual was sitting here, and I'll say, "Mr. Jones, you're sitting right back there," so I'll say your name, "Mr. Brad Jones," renovating the office buildings here, and I was so against it, and I asked for affordable housing component in his building plans. You sat there with your head down each and every time. As a matter of fact, in reviewing the tapes, I seen that every time that he was in front of the desk, that you had your head down, but yet you put a veto out and you include local labor, and then you identified affordable housing component. So please give me an explanation as to why you would do this now. And then also, we had several requests for street vacates last year and even this year. And if you wanted to do something like the city of Seattle, why did you not initiate a proposal to address this policy yourself from the administration? And why didn't you address anything to address affordable housing components as well, and speak up on local labor that would be inclusive at the federal courthouse job? So yes, please answer those questions for me.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. If you recall, about a year and a half ago, I did veto a prior street vacation for the Autozone project, and asked at that time for council to consider adopting a street vacation policy. And I think it was resolved at that time that council was going to look into that and consider that. And we're here again because this is Bill 1 of 2020, and we still haven't adopted a policy, and I think it's something which city council should do. I'll note that the power to grant the street vacation is a power granted to city council, it's not a power granted to the mayor. So whatever evaluative process needs to be established is something which council needs to establish. I'm happy to make some suggestions. I made suggestions before, and I've actually brought with you, in addition to my veto statement this time, I did bring a copy of the street vacation policy from the city of Seattle because I thought it would be of interest to you, and not because I'm suggesting we adopt it wholesale, but because it talks about many of the themes that I would say we need here in Harrisburg. Referring to that policy just for a minute, so we can set the context for the people who are here, on page 22 through 26 at the end, there's talk of an analysis of public benefits for street vacations, and the city is establishing what's called a public benefit requirement. And it states very clearly in the ordinance, and this is something which council could adopt, that "street vacations shall include a commitment to providing public benefits," and that "the concept of providing a public benefit is derived from the public nature of our streets. Streets, whether improved or unimproved, provide important benefits to the public." And it goes on to say that "these benefits would be provided equally to all members of the public, but may be most important to those who have the least. To best address the needs of the community, a strong focus on race and social equity is important in assessing the public benefits included as a part of the street vacation petition." In Seattle, they talk about public benefits not merely being compensatory, but providing a benefit to the public. In particular, public benefits that address the needs of those members of the public most vulnerable to the negative impacts of development, such as residents with low incomes, people experiencing homelessness, renters most at risk of displacement, immigrants and refugees, and communities of color should be considered by the petitioner. And what it basically establishes is an application process whereby the petitioner in asking council for a street vacation has to provide to you in writing a proposal, including details of the public benefit elements, the cost, the budget, and the timing of implementing of those benefit elements in their proposal. To me, this is something very, very worthy of our consideration of adopting, and it's something that can include, and more tailored specifically to Harrisburg, it's something that could include a focus on affordable housing or a focus on workforce development. I know that there was a great concern about this particular project, in part because there was very little deployment of local labor. And to me, this is how you go about changing that dynamic. If you make it very clear to everyone through a policy that this is the evaluative criteria which the city of Harrisburg is adopting, and this is what you're going to have to put in writing as a public benefit plan for us to consider, then you are more apt to engineer a positive outcome than just sort of after the fact complaining that things aren't happening or getting done. In Seattle, they take a handful of different approaches. You can have what they call a physical public benefit, which would be, for instance, if we could use this example, requiring the courthouse or maybe Autozone to make intersection improvements, bicycle improvements, sidewalk improvements, like you suggested for the other project, but actual improvements to public infrastructure in exchange for a street vacation. They talk about programmatic benefits, they talk about a potential real property exchange, and they also talk about a sort of payment in lieu of funds which would then be dedicated for a specific purpose consistent with these policies. So for instance, a potential payment, and this is a payment beyond just the cost of a street vacation application, that could go into an affordable housing fund or some other type of requirement that council would see best. I'm doing this because I know we have a lot of street vacations coming down the pike here for the city, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to work collaboratively to try and establish the public benefits that we both want to see for this city. And again, when we had this conversation about a year and a half ago, it did not result in an adoption of a formal policy, and I'm hopeful that we can adopt a formal policy, and we can focus again on, if I were doing it, I would focus on affordable housing, and I would focus on the workforce development, making sure that the project has a benefit to our local labor force.
Now, I'll say this, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, Kirk. I think you vetoed the actual project of the auto. So you did not veto the vacate of the street. Am I correct? Because I think that one street in particular that we were talking about is you cannot even get an automobile down that particular lane. You can only get a bicycle down. And you're asking for a payment in lieu of them vacating this street.
This does not have to...
Wait, wait, wait. Now wait, now wait. I sat here while you spoke for like six minutes.
All right, sorry.
Now wait. You've been here six years. We've done numerous street vacates. Because Autozone wants to come here and do a project, you have been adamant about not doing anything to incorporate that particular project. You have not done one thing but vetoed everything that is concerning Autozone. Now I want to know, what is the problem here? Because we've had numerous street vacates, and you have not done anything of this sort. You have not brought this Seattle policy to us. Only now, you have done the veto of the courthouse. I don't know why. Because if you didn't veto the, you vetoed the Autozone first, and you bought the courthouse here, and did not give us the bill yet for the veto of the Autozone. So what's going on? Is this a... Now wait a minute, now wait a minute, because to me, there's something personal going here. And if it is, Mayor, we need the Autozone project in the city of Harrisburg. The residents here wanted to do a petition because they were all in favor of the Autozone. Where the Autozone's being placed, there is no usage of the streets. You can't, like I said, get an automobile down that particular street. You can only get a bicycle or a motorcycle down there. At least with the vacate of the city, of the federal building for the different streets, you can get automobiles down those streets. Now I would see that, I would suggest that you ask them to pay for the vacating of that street, because you can use those particular streets that we're going to vacate. So why didn't you not do that with the federal government? Why did you not say something then when we were in conversation with them? Why did you not say about affordable housing then, when Mr. Jones has renovated five or six buildings, and you sat here with your head down and not said a word about affordable housing component? Why did you not say nothing when the federal government came here, and we met with all the elected officials besides yourself, you were not there, to ask about local labor involvement in the city of Harrisburg, asked about local residents here to be able to have a job on that site at the federal government? You were never in conversations, and you never went to any of the meetings. And I did not see you walking around the perimeter of that building. But now you're going to add a component, affordable housing, and as well as local labor usage? So I'm concerned. Is this a personal vendetta against whoever wants to bring Autozone here?
Okay, Madam President, I think you'll find that we're probably more in agreement than you recognize. I don't think those characterizations are accurate.
Well, Mayor, you did.
This does not, hold on.
You didn't do anything...
I'm trying to politely respond to what you said. This has nothing to do with Autozone, this has to do with the federal courthouse. And I was moved to veto the street vacation of the federal courthouse in part because I think the construction of that courthouse with no local labor, virtually no labor, let alone from the city, but from Dauphin County in general, is an embarrassment and something...
But where were you at the table? I seen the commissioners there, the senator was there, the congressman was there. Everyone was there except you.
So I was at meetings with the courthouse, too.
I was there representing the city of Harrisburg.
Let me just say, Madam President, I think talk sometimes is cheap, and action is what people want, and this is the type of action...
Well, I think it would have been important as the executor of the city of the, you have the, you're in the executive branch of the city of Harrisburg, you represent the 50-plus residents here. It would be important to see you out at the local federal courthouse.
Okay.
Construction site. And it also would have been beneficial to the residents to hear you speak about the fact that they are coming here in the city of Harrisburg and constructing a federal courthouse without the local labor involvement. You have not been publicly saying anything about that. You have not said anything about affordable housing components when Mr. Brad Jones, as a developer, wait a minute, said, brought six projects here. You kept your head down, and now you're going to be vocal about Seattle?
Madam President, my head is not down.
It was down. I looked at the tapes.
I think Mr. Jones would probably confirm that we've had a number of meetings about...
Of course you'll speak to him, that's your friend.
Okay. But we are committed to adopting an affordable housing ordinance for the city, and this would be something in addition to an affordable housing ordinance.
Mayor, you have not said anything. How many residents in the city of Harrisburg has acknowledged this tape of city council legislative session where we've been involvement, when I've been advocating for affordable housing, and they have not seen or heard anything from you? No response whatsoever. I can enlist about 20 residents right now who have come up to me...
Madam President, I think it's more effective to work together for policy change than it is just...
But don't work against someone because you dislike or you have a personal dislike of someone, and you don't want to see a project go to fruition, okay? Because I was out there at the federal government level, making sure GSA would involve local residents, local law, I mean, local labor union, and as well as Mr. Mattson, Mr. Majors, Ms. Bowers, we were all in attendance. We were all vocal regarding this. We did not see you. You should have been the one who out there advocating for your residents for the city of Harrisburg.
Okay. Madam President, I think this is a means of being effective. I think it's more effective than marching. I think you are the legislative body, and you have the ability to put in place an evaluative process that can actually affect change. I am in agreement with you, I think, that this is something that we need. I'm in agreement, I think, with all council members that we should see more local labor on projects like that. So what I am humbly suggesting is that you don't have a lot of say over the land development process, you do have say over the street vacation process. The land development process is mostly dictated by the code, it comes to you for affirmation. The street vacation process is something which is entirely within your discretion, and the way governing bodies and other municipalities have approached this is they have established policies which outline clear public benefits, which they then implement by law in an ordinance, and they have achieved, and you know, forget Seattle, you can choose a different one if you wish. Part of the reason I didn't bring you Seattle earlier is because it was just recently adopted, so it's a brand-new example of an ordinance.
Well, we will work on something, we will work on a policy, Mayor, from this day on, we will work on something in similar to, similar to the city of Seattle. Go ahead, Mr. Mattson.
Real quick, I know that we have a couple of economic development projects coming, one that's being reviewed this evening by the planning commission at Harrisburg University. I don't know if that's, land development plan will include a street vacation at some point, but I do think we should work on this quickly. So I'm ready to make myself available to coordinate.
It is true that at the early stage of the Autozone project, about a year and a half, when I vetoed that initial street vacation, it was a year and a half ago, I did suggest that we adopt such a policy for the city, and I recommended the council do it, and there were, there was talk about doing something. We didn't do anything. And we are now facing a whole series of potential street vacations for projects. This really is the, an opportunity for council to state very clearly what its values are, what its community standards are, what its workforce values are, what its commitment to affordable housing is, and this is a way to do it. And it's not too late to send that message to the federal government, so I would urge you not to override my veto and to put this policy in place. Last time I came before council, you said you wanted more time to come up with a policy, and you didn't want to hold it against any project that came before you without such a policy, but I think at this point, we've got to draw the line and say, moving forward, we need to have a policy in place, and we're not going to make any more exceptions.
Okay, but you're asking for, now I'm looking at the Seattle. So you think that, you feel that we should get a monetary fee from developers or contractors for the vacation of street?
I'm saying that we should add...
Because this is clearly what it says in here.
I'm not saying we adopt the Seattle ordinance, you know, per se.
But you were saying a benefit.
I'm saying that we adopt an evaluative criteria which says that Harrisburg City Council wants to know what the public benefit is in exchange for the street vacation. And that requires all potential applicants for the street vacation to put into writing how they're going to address those benefit needs. And in Seattle, they provide a sort of panoply of different types of options, right? You can make a payment in lieu of doing it, you could make those public improvements, there are a number of different things. So potentially, the option is open for the developers, including the federal government, to engage in different ways. I will note, the city is spending a lot of money to, for the federal courthouse to upgrade 7th Street, to make sure that there is enough capacity for the traffic to work. And while the federal government's been cooperative, they haven't exactly opened their checkbook and said they're going to pay for that new roundabout, or they're going to pay for the new signal improvements or some of the new upgrades. There is potential room for more, and I would use this as a means of opening the door for negotiation. But if you're going to do it, you have to be fair to everyone, and the policy has to be adopted and be in writing and be a sort of clear standard. And that's what we're missing. Part of the reason we're arguing about it is because you don't have any standard currently for how you do the street vacations. They're basically just sort of given out with nothing, no public benefit analysis done, and that's what I'm urging us to change as a city.
Should we go back six years, since you began, since you started your...
No, we should start now in 2020.
I mean, you want to start now, but you, what about all the street vacates that we've already done?
Well, I would have liked it if you'd started... Well, I would have liked it if you'd started a year and a half ago, when we first had the conversation. But we'll start now. That would be, that would be fine.
For the record, we did not, we were acting without a community economic development director. That is supposed to be a point administrator to work with us on these issues. We brought it up consistently, and we did not get a lot of support on the administrative side. We're part-time employees. We did not have full-time employees to support and help us through that. So it's a little unfair to make that accusation towards the council.
And you're not, you weren't in a hurry to hire one? We kept asking every, every council legislative session.
Well, we had to hire the right person. It is sometimes hard. We've always been committed to having an economic development, we have one now.
We have one now.
So perhaps another reason to move forward in a spirit of collaboration. Honestly, while there may be some personal castigation going back and forth, I would say, we believe in the same things. We actually can identify the public benefit in the same way. All I'm saying is, let's create a criteria which specifies how that public benefit is evaluated. That's it. It's actually not a very controversial thing to say. But it is something which council has to do. The administration cannot do it. It is your evaluative procedure because you are the ones vested with the power to give a street vacation.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions, council members? There's a public benefit to, for the street vacate. Is there any public benefit for anything else, Mayor? Should we not do a public benefit for the people, the residents of Harrisburg, for the developers coming in here? Should we not do a public benefit to them, for them? Any other questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote. Mr. Petrowski.
Calling the vote to override the mayor of veto of Bill 1 of 2020, Mr. Aulet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
No.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The override carries.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 2 of 2020. Please read that into record, Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution 2 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Aulet, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services contract with Maverick Strategies for strategic guidance, intelligence gathering for lobbying-related services.
Any questions or comments, council members?
Yes. We've had a lot of discussion about this resolution going forward. As most people can attest over time, I've been a big proponent of being able to use a lobbying firm to help us out with the city's needs at the state legislative level. As Ray knows, we've had conversations back and forth. He also knows I've been disappointed by some behavior I would say is highly partisan in an environment that I wish was not partisan. And that has really shaken my confidence in being able to move forward, and there's a lot of reasons for that. One, as much as I can't dictate the political landscape that we all have to live and work in, I can ask and desire that we do better when it comes to the political discourse that we involve ourselves in. And that is something that I believe strongly in the way I conduct myself, both professionally, personally, and within the community. And I want to hold that expectation for those who do business on behalf of the city. So there's a lot of hesitancy I have coming into, to approve this contract. But at the same time, I do see the value in what we are trying to accomplish collectively as a city, to work with a legislature where we, as a democratic body, do not hold the majority. So I did want to kind of make that comment. I encourage my colleagues to vote their conscience on this, but I also really do strongly encourage that we do better when it comes to these things. I do have a motion on the table to amend the resolution to include a provision about the contract expiring December 31st of 2020. That's a change, and I believe we amended with a 30-day out, I believe, as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Was there anything else that I missed as part of that?
No, and we have conferred with the vendor who's agreed to those terms.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table with those changes in Resolution 2.
There's a motion. Have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the amended motion?
Yeah, just for clarification. So the original resolution was through 2021. This amendment would move it to 20, the end of 2020.
Correct.
And then the 30-day out. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were.
That was what was requested, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
And I'm sorry, we're voting on the-
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Call anyone.
Call the vote, please.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
No.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The amendment carries.
Please call the vote as amended.
Calling the vote for Resolution 2 as amended, Mr. Aulet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
No.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 2 as amended passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 11 of 2020.
Resolution 11 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the transfer of Strawberry Square Arcade, an elevated walkway connecting Strawberry Square to 30 North 3rd Street, the Whittaker Center for the Science and Arts, Walnut Street Garage, and the Harrisburg Hilton to Strawberry Square Condominium Association.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 11? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Aulet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Resolution 11 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 13 of 2020.
Resolution 13 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Aulet, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service, services agreement with Mary Dussel, PC, for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the city of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Aulet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 13 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 14.
Resolution 14 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Aulet. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Ecological Services, Inc., for the purpose of providing lake management services at Italian Lake.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Aulet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 14 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 15.
Resolution 15 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Aulet, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Harrisburg authorizing and approving an amendment to the second amended restated settlement agreement between the city of Harrisburg and Ambac Assurance Corporation.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 16.
Resolution 16 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution in support of state legislation to allow every resident of Pennsylvania access to a valid driver's license regardless of immigration status.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Aulet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 16 passes.
Thank you. You're quite welcome. Moving on to Resolution 17, 2020.
Resolution 17 of 2020 was moved by Ms. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the city's participation in the certified local government program.
That would be placed in budget, I mean, Building and Housing Committee, I'm sorry. Moving on to Resolution 18.
Resolution 18 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the city's participation in the certified local government program.
That would be placed in budget, I mean, Building and Housing Committee, I'm sorry. Moving on to Resolution 18.
Resolution 18 of 2020 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Wallace Montgomery and Associates, LLP, for the purpose of completing the state street rapid response final design.
And that would be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, are there any old business this evening? Moving on to new business, is there any new business? I do want to say to the subrecipients that we, the letters have already went out to you, and that will describe your funding. March 24th is introduction for legislation for the CDPG grant, and then April 14th, city council will vote on that particular funding. Any other new business, council members?
Yes. Just one. It kind of, I was thinking about this prior to Mr. Ford's comments earlier today. The city has seen a, an uptick in violence that has shaken quite a few neighborhoods. And I'd like to know if there's a specific response or something in terms of process or things that the administration is undertaking to combat that. It's, I think it's particularly unnerving when violence hits any neighborhood in our city. But I think the combination of neighborhoods that have been affected in a very small spate of time, a slate of time, is really alarming and concerning for, I think, everybody within the city. So I'd like to hear from the administration, perhaps whether it be at our next work session or legislative session, a little bit more about how we are addressing it, combating it, and doing what we can to protect particularly most vulnerable, but everybody within the city.
Thank you, Mr. Aulet. Is there anything else, council members?
Yes, just, you know, I think one of the things we saw today is that as a city, we're ill-equipped to serve our residents who do not speak English or who are hearing impaired. So it would really like us as a city to begin developing a more robust plan so that our meetings can actually be accessible to all of our residents in all the ways that are possible. So if y'all could start proposing resolutions, bringing down resolutions on integrating those components into your budget every year, that would be great.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Any other new, any, Ms. Green?
I just want to announce that the Harrisburg School District and the American Literacy Corporation have decided to postpone the 500-man reading for public health measures to prevent exposure to COVID-19. So when that's rescheduled, we'll make sure that we announce it as well and let everybody know.
Okay, thank you. To the Harrisburg residents, of course, you know, this is the year we're going to get new voting machines. There is a schedule that you can go practice on the machines. On March 28th, at 12 o'clock noon, as well as March 31st, at 5 o'clock, at 5:00 PM, at the Madeleine O'Wine Memorial Library, which sits on 2410 North 3rd Street. You can go there and practice on the machines for the upcoming voting, as well as at the East Shore Library, which is in Lower Paxton Township. It's at 4501 Ethel Street.